Okay, stand by.
Uh-oh.
Five, four, three, two, one.
All right, welcome everyone to the April 3rd meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. And I am having a computer issue, if you can give me one moment. And thanks to Mike, I have a new script which I will read shortly, I promise. Here we go.
Well, while we're waiting, go UConn. All right? Go UConn.
She's escaped that program, so I'm not at UConn.
All right, this is Select Board Chair Josh Levine. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwerko.
Here.
Tom Acusa.
Go UConn.
Veneet Hemavati.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Corinne Micey-Munz.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q&amp;A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Great, and we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up on our agenda, we have our announcements. Citizen of the Year and Citizen Commendation Awards. Nominations are now open for the Citizen of the Year and Citizen Commendation Awards. The nomination deadline is April 19th, 2023. The Citizen of the Year Award is given to recognize the Long Meadow citizen who, through their personal involvement, leadership abilities, and selfless giving of their time and talent over the previous 12 months, has positively affected Long Meadow and the lives of its citizens. The Citizen of the Year Award is presented to a citizen who exemplifies a lifetime of distinguished volunteer service to the town of Long Meadow and the community. The Citizen Commendation Award is awarded to individuals who perform an exceptional act or service wherein their contributions, performance, and achievements provided exceptional benefits to the town of Long Meadow in a given year. Multiple Citizen Commendation Awards may be presented. For additional information about the awards and to submit a nomination, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. 2023 Annual Town Meeting. The annual town meeting is set for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. The final version of the warrant insert will be available at longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. The warrant will also be delivered via the reminder to all Long Meadow households on April 20th, 2023. Stay tuned during the next few weeks for additional information and educational videos on some of the warrant articles in anticipation of the May 9th meeting. And just to add to that, if you have opted out of the reminder, you will still get the warrant. All right. Next up, we have our annual legislative visit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, just want to apologize, I'm flying solo this evening. My date for this evening, State Rep. Brian Ash is actually coming back from Boston right now and is probably stuck in a lot of traffic making his way west. But Brian sends his regards as a former member of this august body. I know he wishes he could be here tonight. I think he was still on when there was a three-member select board, when Brian was a part of it. But I just wanted to come here tonight. I'm your new state senator, State Senator Jake Olivera, representing a newly configured state senate district from what Senator Lesser had for the last eight years. The new district includes three more communities that were added to it, including South Hadley to the north, and then to the east of here, Palmer and Warren, which is actually Worcester County. So the district name has actually changed as well from the first Hampden in Hampshire to the Hampden, Hampshire, and Worcester State Senate District. The metropolis of Warren makes it a Worcester in the name, if you have a piece of their counties. No stranger to local government, spent 16 years working in my hometown of Ludlow, serving first four years as a member of the Rep. Town Meeting, which is our form of government for our legislative branch. Instead of open town meeting like you have here, we have representative town meetings. So I served there from the age of 18 all the way till the ripe old age of 22, when I got myself elected to the Ludlow School Committee where I served for 12 years and worked with many school districts across Massachusetts, serving as president of the School Committee Association in 2016, and got to know a lot of the communities here in western Massachusetts, but also statewide. And I served with folks from Long Meadow and the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, which runs our vocational education, some special education programming, and some kind of special features like busing for seven school districts in the lower half of the Pioneer Valley. So I always, the most fulfilling time that I had on that board was always listening to other members when they reported about what was going on in their school districts. So for over a decade, I had a front row seat of happenings here in Long Meadow, as you built this new building and secured the financing for that, and then as we embark on a new venture for looking at our middle school structure here in the town of Long Meadow. Very familiar with the process, I've met with your school superintendent, Marty O'Shea, who I knew from his time at Hampden-Wooperham, and now you're lucky enough to have here in Long Meadow. My role tonight is just to come here to, first off, give a welcome to all of you, including your newest member, Veneet. Congratulations. I think this is your third meeting, so you're hitting the ground running. But I also wanted to offer my office as a open, as an open office that you can call on if you need anything, and if the residents of Long Meadow need anything. My office is ably staffed by some wonderful, experienced individuals. I am so fortunate to have Jennifer Pickering, who stayed on as district director for Senator Lesser and stayed on with me as our district director. Jennifer knows more about Long Meadow than, as a longtime resident, than anybody else. She educates me about the community, and if there are any questions that I have about Long Meadow, I usually go to Jennifer first. But use us as a resource. You know, we're not, you know, sitting in Boston in the state senate chamber, we're here in the district. We try to participate in as many events as we possibly can with 12 communities and 170,000 people living in this district. Long Meadow is one of those 12 communities that we're getting to know more. Since I didn't represent it in my term in the Massachusetts House, I had in the House, I had my hometown of Ludlow, Belcher Town, part of Chickopee, and part of Springfield. Through the redistricting process, Senator Lesser's areas of Springfield and Chickopee were reduced significantly. And so the beauty of this district is that just about all the communities, including my sections of Springfield and in Chickopee, range roughly, except for our really small communities, from about 14,000 to about 20,000. So everything is pretty much equal in size when we're looking at the district. And I want to be present and support the Long Meadow community as much as I can in any endeavors that you might have, whether it's legislatively or socially, or promoting the community as a whole. I was appointed just a month ago by Senate President Karen Spilka to some several leadership positions within the state senate. People ask me a lot, what's the difference between the House and the senate? On the senate side, you're guaranteed a committee chairmanship. And the committee that I have the privilege of chairing this session is a Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government, which deals with any type of home rule petitions that come from a community. It deals with certain issues having to do with animal rights and animal legislation, kennels, declawing of animals, all those types of bills go to the municipalities committee. It's a very process-heavy committee with hundreds of bills that are before in each session. I actually requested the committee, given my background in local government, but also because every member has a bill before that committee. Most districts have home rule petitions that will be going before the legislature, and its first stop on that journey for those home rule petitions is the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. And my co-chair of that committee on the House side is State Representative Carol Fiola from Fall River. We have our first hearing coming up on April 11th to deal with a lot of the home rules that didn't make it over the finish line last legislative session in late December, and are up against tight deadlines for town meetings and city council votes moving forward. I'm also privileged to represent a variety of different types of municipal governments in my district. I have open town meetings, I have representative town meetings, I have town councils like in East Long Meadow and in Palmer, and then I have type A forms of government, mayor forms of government like Springfield and Chickopee. So the diversity that I have in my district of the varying different types of local government, it suits me well going into this role as Chair of Municipalities and Regional Government. But I also am Vice Chair of two other committees, the Joint Committee on Public Health and the Joint Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Culture, which is very important for western Massachusetts, since one out of six jobs are tied directly to the creative economy. So I'm looking forward to partnering with my other western Mass colleagues who are chairs, co-chairs of that committee in the legislature. But I also sit as a member of a few other committees that have some importance to local government. I sit on the Joint Committee on Consumer Protection and Professional Licensure, which deals with liquor licenses. And if a community is appealing for additional liquor licenses, those bills go to consumer protection and professional licensure. I also sit on financial services, which deals with the banking regulatory side as well as the insurance side, and any legislation having to do with that goes before that committee. And I also sit on election laws. And so several home rules, if you're changing things in your election procedures, sometimes go to election laws as well as municipalities. So it will serve me well if there are any, if there are any home rules that Long Meadow might be pursuing over the next two years as I chair that committee. Most of my priorities in the legislature have to do with regional equity. And actually, I've partnered very closely with the Superintendents Association, with the School Committee Association, with Mass Municipal Association, on things to help alleviate the tax burden and the burden of paying for services, particularly education, for communities. Right now, one of the major cost drivers for school districts is special education costs that are rising well at a rate that's outpacing inflation. In fact, out of district placements for our special ed providers, our independent special ed providers are going up 14 and a half percent next year. I've actually worked with the Superintendents and School Committees Association to file a bill that would up the special education circuit breaker, which is designed to help school districts with those extraordinary costs that go well beyond their average per pupil spending, to raise that threshold of reimbursement from 75% to 90% and to fully fund it in order to accommodate for that growth in special education costs. Looking more long-term, a bill that I filed, working with all those associations again, has to do with looking at our special education system in general and how we finance it in the Commonwealth. Similar to what the legislature did about five years ago with the Foundation Budget Review Commission that reported out changes to the Chapter 70 funding formula, which is the lifeblood of many school, of most school districts. Here in the Commonwealth, we took a wholesale look at that and reported back recommendations. And over the next seven years, which we're about halfway through, we're going to be pumping in hundreds of millions of dollars into our public schools to make up with that report. The bill that I have filed is to do the same with special education costs, to look at special education as a whole here in the Commonwealth and report back to the legislature on how the state can better help school districts and communities afford special education costs for their district. So my hope is that if that bill is reported out favorably, the commission will work together to make recommendations to the state that will then inform our budget discussions in order to pump more dollars into our school districts, in order to make up for those gaps in special education costs that's seen as a major cost driver. The big pockets of funds that every municipality looks at each and every year and what they're getting from the Commonwealth is obviously Chapter 70 for their education aid, unrestricted local aid, but also Chapter 98. And we just passed last Thursday in the senate, and we are now working in conference with the House on a Chapter 90 bill that includes new pots of funds for communities. You know, we have been kind of stymied over the last couple of decades of having a very stagnant amount in Chapter 98 that goes back to municipalities. It's been right around $200 million a year for the last decade plus. Obviously, the buying power of that $200 million has diminished significantly over the last decade, and in fact, over the last three years. But in order to make up for that, we've put in extra dollars within that Chapter 90 bill to make up for some of those gaps. Things like culverts and streams that also are high price tag issues for school district. We've actually doubled that $200 million mark with other pots of funds that communities can access for roads, bridges, sidewalks. And we added in a new piece in the senate side that we're in negotiations with the House, a $25 million pot of funds for low-density populated communities. Obviously, Long Meadow isn't one of them, but I have many communities in my district that would benefit greatly from some of those extra dollars that we put into Chapter 90. We are hoping that we can wrap up negotiations with the House in a reasonable amount of time and send that bill to the governor's desk, because we know from the municipalities, the longer that we wait in order to release those dollars to the communities, the longer it takes them to get projects started. And with such a short season for actual, you know, road construction, we want to get those monies to the communities as quickly as possible. I could go on about a few other areas, but obviously, some of the big-ticket items that we're going to be working on this legislative session, we're looking at some of the additional tax dollars that we've put in place. The voters came to the ballot box this past November, passed the fair share amendment, and we are making sure that we utilize those dollars to reinvest in the things that the voters told us to invest in. Our transportation systems, but also our education systems as well. I'm not saying that there's a lot of funds that are going into that account. The estimates right now are between 1.1 billion and a little bit over 1.5 billion is the range we're looking at, a little shorter than the $2 billion that were initially estimated. And we'll see what patterns and behaviors are created by this new tax law change to guide our work going forward for our projections. We're entering budget season right now, and obviously, going around to select boards, city councils, and town councils is a priority of mine, because as we enter the budget season, we want to be partners with you. We want to know your priorities as a community, and if there are ways in which we can help to submit funding requests as we go into budget season, we are happy to work with our colleagues in the House side to ensure that each community gets their fair share of funding, particularly for projects that you might be working on that might be one time. I've read extensively, Mark, the work that you've done in your looking at Proposition Two and a Half here in the Commonwealth. Jennifer has shared with me some of the reports, and I'm still going through them right now. Love to have a conversation with you, one-on-one, offline, to delve a little bit deeper into that subject and to see where we can work as a delegation here in western Massachusetts to build support for some changes to our tax code in order to give municipalities some flexibility going forward. So thank you for your work there. I could go on for a while. I would like to have an exchange with all of you to answer any questions that you might have and to hear some of your priorities. As we mentioned earlier, we've been going around to each one of the select boards, having conversations with them. It's not me to talk at you. I want this to be a back-and-forth. I want to hear what you're thinking, some of the questions that you're hearing from your residents, and how we, as a delegation, myself and Brian Ash, can support the community as a whole. So with that, Mr. Chairman, just thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to come here just to introduce myself and also take any questions that you might have.
Senator, out there, it's nice to see you in your new role. Thank you very much for coming in today. We appreciate it. You covered a lot of what I wanted to ask about, especially on the circuit breaker money. When, I know when the school committee did a great job setting their budget this year, but it was, that was an especially difficult challenge and a surprise, and it's an important thing for a town to do, and I'm glad that the legislature is addressing that surprise and, because it was, it was tough, and I'm sure a lot of communities are having a tough time with that. And would I be correct that Prop. Two and a Half, that would be, if we did bring that up, that would be on your committee?
It would. So home rules, as long as they get the support of the community following the process, usually the first stop along the way, if it's a home rule petition coming from a local community, would be to the municipality committees, committee. There are some changes, the clerks in the legislature assign bills to committees. Since this is kind of a unique area, if it was the Proposition Two and a Half, it does have the possibility of going to revenue as well as another stop. And sometimes bills get multiple committees and stop there. So once, you know, let's say the bill does go to municipalities and we sign off on it, we might refer it, and might be referred again to a different committee, since it has to do with revenue and kind of a unique situation, which I don't think has been broached yet by the legislature yet. So there are many stops.
Difficult path to shepherd it through.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a complicated process.
I'd love to hear more about it, and I'm glad you're going to be talking with Mark about it. And I'd be remiss if I didn't ask if you have any insight on, any discussion on the pipeline in town. That's the thing I hear about the most from folks.
As, as do I, and I think, you know, throughout my time as a state representative, working with the western Mass delegation, the concerns that we hear from residents, not just the Long Meadow of Springfield, of a high-volume pipeline going through very densely populated residential neighborhoods, as well as an environmental justice community through the city of Springfield with very little benefit to this side of the river, which doesn't meet the standard, as far as I'm concerned, of the climate goals that I was proud to vote on as a legislator, of reducing our dependency on fossil fuels long-term, and also a costly project to the ratepayers in general. I have been, have voiced strong opposition towards it, both publicly and privately, and working with, you know, advocates here in the community, but also residents themselves. When I was knocking on doors throughout Long Meadow, that was probably the number one issue that was brought up, was the pipeline that was going through. You can see it as you drive through the community with the signs and the political activism that exists right now within the community. I have, I don't have any insight to provide further, except for that when the regulatory process was going through in the public hearings, working and making sure that those public hearings, that we bring people from the state and DPU out here to the district and meet with residents face-to-face instead of on a platform or just a phone call, is something that's very troubling to me. Yes, online platforms are wonderful to use, but when you're just having a phone call and you're not actually talking to residents where they live, it can limit the opportunity to actually have a conversation and for residents' s, for us, their opinion on a particular subject.
I have some other questions, but I'll open up in a moment. I think when I came in, you were talking about crumbling concrete, and I wasn't able to go to the hearing last week, but I'm a real estate lawyer, I hear about it from folks who are very nervous about it, scared to test even. Can you give us an update on what's happening with that?
So we formed kind of a little group of legislators within the legislature that have districts that are impacted by this. Obviously, myself, Senator Goby, Senator Fatman, who now stretches across from Munson along the Connecticut border. We're looking to what other states around us have done, including Connecticut, which has put greater dollars for communities and residents to access to repair foundations or put in new foundations, which are necessary right now. We are joining and speaking as one voice as a delegation to create a pot of funds in order to have residents access it, because the cost to the residents and the value of the homes, as you know, as someone that works in real estate, is diminished completely by this. But it's also about making sure that we check the homes that are, that have been constructed, and making sure that we have proper regulations to ensure that this doesn't happen again. So we test the concrete that we are putting in, that is, you know, literally the foundations that our homes are built on. So thank you for raising that issue. We have joined together as a, as a group of legislators who are impacted by it, and we're going to be pursuing, pursuing funding to help out homeowners that are impacted.
Very glad to hear that. Tom?
Yeah, along those lines, we had a meeting a few years ago with Congressman Ritchie Neal and the IRS, and they talked about how folks who suffered that kind of a loss would be able to deduct it from their federal taxes. Is there any talk about that at the state level, that people will be able to deduct some of those losses?
I have not heard that yet. However, thank you for the suggestion. I have not heard that, we'll make a note of that and add that to our next discussion. I'll, I'll speak with Senator Goby, whose district is impacted the most by this issue right now, and Senator Fatman, to see if we can possibly use that as another idea and vehicle to help families that are impacted by it. So thanks for sharing.
Great, great. So a couple of things. You know, you talked about there's a possibility with this new tax, that the millionaire tax, that there would be more funds available. And one of the things that concerns me, and we see it in the news quite a bit, recently we've had several murders of women who were domestic violence, and men also die. But my concern is that, are we finding a way to help perpetrators of violence? Because the perpetrators of violence and domestic violence aren't that much different than the perpetrators of violence and school violence, and violence against police and so forth. And so, you know, when you look at that funds, those funds, if there's any way that we could, you could keep in mind that domestic violence is a serious issue, it's not really a municipal issue, but it is a, it's an, it's an issue that affects all communities. And so, some county facilities have programs inside there for domestic violence, other counties' facilities don't have much, you know. The community programs cost the perpetrators a lot of money to go to, and a lot of people can't afford it. So they say, I can't go. And the judges say, well, they can't afford it, you know, what are we going to do? The, it's, you know, I used to run domestic violence reduction groups in the jail, and I would have perpetrators of violence, it, towards the end of the group, say, I should have learned this in middle school, you know. Now, the schools would say, well, we don't have funds, and we don't have time to set up domestic violence reduction programs or an understanding in middle schools, they cover some of it in health classes. But, you know, a lot of the violence that happens is unpredictable. I mean, we had one in western Mass, it was a police lieutenant who killed his wife, was convicted of that. So it isn't like we're going to catch a net, have a net that catches everybody. But right now, I say that we have a net that isn't catching very many people at all until after the fact, and that net after the fact is pretty, has a lot of holes in it. And when you look at other sorts of mental health difficulties, if you have a substance abuse addiction, you could call and they'll, you'll be in an inpatient program, 28 days, no problem. If you have a problem with eating addiction, you know, they'll put you in programs. There's so many inpatient programs, there's no inpatient program for violent men. And violent men could create more and more victims, and so that's why it's important to, to address perpetrators. And I, you know, I applaud the work of the YWCA, they do a great job for victims. I know that they're doing some work at the women's jail for victims, but I, you know, I just, as you go through this, I just want to, if you think of me, think of, Tom is wondering, can I do anything for domestic violence to help reduce it in our communities, you know, and programs for that, so.
Great, and, you know, thank you for mentioning that, and issues of domestic violence and mental health as a whole. We're fortunate to have John Viallis, who's my colleague from across the river in Westfield, is going to be chairing the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Committee in the legislature this session. The senate has been very focused on putting more dollars, we did a larger mental health bill last year. I suspect that this legislative session, we're going to be revisiting some of the mental health issues and looking at programs that are successful, some of them that are homegrown by county correctional facilities or sheriff's departments here in Massachusetts. Obviously, there's varying different degrees of sophistication of these programs and support for them locally, but looking at them as, as part of it, as we look to increase funding in those areas and really prevent at the front end of helping to rehabilitate people and have access for those that, you know, show signs of violence early on, is essential to doing that. As far as the millionaire- As far as the millionaires' tax or the fair share amendments concerned, you know, most of those dollars will probably be dedicated to transportation and education. And on the education side, more of the conversation now is being focused in on early childhood education, but also higher education, as well as ways for investment. Looking at our K-12 system, the Student Opportunity Act that was passed a few years ago, that's going to be pumping in extra dollars into our neediest of school districts, like Springfield, Chickapi, and Holyoke, but also showing some benefits to our more suburban school districts, not to the level they are, providing those resources that are essential for mental health. We, in our mental health bill that we passed last year, we were able to secure on, on public high, in higher education, additional dollars for the mental health challenges that we're seeing rearing its head for, in higher education. But thank you for putting a pin in for domestic violence, domestic abuse, and for the need to really have proactive measures in order to, you know, help people that are showing signs of violence, violent behaviors early on. Preventative care and treatment is much better than doing it at the back end.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. It's nice to call you that.
Mark?
Senator, thanks for coming by. You did hit on a couple of things, but I have a list. And, and I'll just go through the list because I think, I just like to hear about them. The first one is state aid, you know, I, state aid, it does go up, but when the state, you read in the paper that the state has, you know, almost windfalls of additional revenue, and the, the increase to the cities and towns is, is fairly pedestrian, it really is, is problematic. It certainly go a long way toward not only Long Meadow, but every town's local tax, tax situation. So, I think keeping an eye on state aid is, you know, somebody from the local community governance, I think is important. The other is that we, here in Long Meadow, is the, the split of, of educational funds, that the formulas, I know we're in the, I think, the second year of a new formula, second, third year?
We're actually in fourth.
Fourth year, okay. Of, of new formulas. We in Long Meadow still think it's woefully inadequate in terms of meeting the needs. And you talked about special ed, I just pulled up the numbers. Our, our special ed costs next year are going up, they're, they're going to go up $365,000. You know, that's not something we can, we can deal with very easily in, in this town. In fact, it represents almost the, everything above the standard 2 and 1/2% increase of our school committee budget, and it's something that we really need to address. So, as soon as you can get on that proposed bill, it, it certainly-
I filed it, I'm the lead sponsor of it.
Yeah, it would be, be pretty helpful. The, the other issue is, that I wanted to talk about, and one of my favorite topics is, just to make sure you're aware of what's been going on in the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. There is a legislation that's been filed to try to move that to a more equitable system of, of management and control. I'm just asking that you look into it and support it. It's, it's important. I mean, I can tell you, as recently as this week's meeting, you know, they said, "We don't have public comment, we don't want to hear from anybody, we don't want to know anything." It's a real close situation, they're standing on $7 million in their checking account, no interest. I mean, that's because the treasurer is not a treasurer, he's just somebody they plucked out of the air, and I say that with some respect.
Who filed the legislation? Do you know, Mark?
Brian Ashes.
Brian did. Oh, we'll get, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, you know, the amount of money they could be making if they were just doing what people at home do, investing their money in money market funds and things like that, but, but that's not how they at work. And so, I think it's important, I think it's important for the entire region in terms of making sure that we look after the, the benefits of our retirees and our current employees. So, I, I think that's important. The other, the other thing that I wanted to just mention is, I serve on, and I'm going to say more about this later in our meeting, but I, I'm on the advisory committee of the PVTA, and it's one of, people don't know, it's, they're called RTAs, Regional Transit Authorities. The PVTA has a budget deficit next year of four point something million bucks, that they're going to pull from some old federal money to kind of make, but you can do that once, but we've got to look into better state aid for region, and, and it's not specifically going to help Long Meadow, but if the regional transit goes down, it's the whole region that, that's hurting. And they're financially in tough shape, so I'd, I'd ask you to pay particular attention to funding of RTAs, and I'm sure, you know, you'll hear from PVTA and other people about that.
We just had our legislative luncheon with them, proud member of the Regional Transportation Caucus in the legislature, working with my colleagues both on the Cape and in Worcester County, who chair it right now. I will say that the Baker administration did not do and provide enough funding for our regional transit authorities. It took the legislature to backfill, his budget would usually come out, and shortchange the regional transit authorities, and the legislature would have to come back in. It is used significantly in my district, and, you know, a lot, and also students are impacted. You go to UMass, you go to the five colleges, in order for students to get around, they're utilizing PVTA to, for their courses. So, thank you for mentioning that.
So, people need to, to understand that. And I think the, the, you know, that'll be it for now. I think the other thing is, we will be in touch about the Proposition 2 and 1/2 ceiling. I mean, people need to understand that it's a, it's somewhat unique to Western Massachusetts because of our depressed property values, and, and it's a, a situation that if we don't do something about it, we can't keep crossing our fingers and saying, "Let's hope our, our property values go up," because all we need is two years in a row of recession or lower property values, and we're going to start laying off a significant number of people in our town. And frankly, there are eight other towns in Western Massachusetts that are right behind us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Just, I wanted to comment on the Chapter 70 funding formula. You know, I found hard, you know, working with colleagues across the state in order to update the funding formula, when ed reform came in '93, we waited nearly, nearly 20, over 20 years to update that funding formula. I think it was 25 years, 26 years before the Foundation Budget Review Commission reported out, and obviously, school districts changed significantly over that 25-year time period, including rises in low-income students, special education costs, benefits to employees, all of those, English-language learners, all of those had a significant impact. And areas, like I said before, like Springfield, Chickapi, and Holyoke were definitely shortchanged. They are now, with this new funding formula, getting the dollars that they deserve. Springfield just implemented this past year, universal pre-K for the first, first school district, for universal all-day pre-K, partly with the support of the Student Opportunity Act. But there are communities that didn't share in the benefit. My community, Ludlow, where I served on the school committee, I think our Chapter 70 increase for this year, FY 24, $73,000. I think it's $500,000 here for Long Meadow. You guys are seeing, doing a little bit better than we are. Ludlow, Belcher Town, a few other my communities are basically flatlined on Chapter 70 right now. But the benefit of that act, when it was passed, is that we put in, into the legislation, that we couldn't wait another 30 years in order, in order to crack open that formula. We're actually, I think, you know, we're in year three or four, as I mentioned before, of that seven-year funding trend, and it says that we need to begin to look at and revisit that funding formula and rework it. And my goal, through those conversations, working with the advocates on the education community, whether it's superintendent, school committee members, Mass Municipal Association, is to ensure that the communities that did not see the benefits in there and are seeing rising costs, that in the next iteration of this funding formula, that we account for them. We're actually doing that right now with some of our rural school districts, that are seeing a declining student population and seeing rising costs right now. We're putting in more dollars for those rural areas that are really seeing such a crunch right now with flatlining and, and reducing student populations, that's really hitting those school districts very hard. So, thanks for raising it, Mark.
Thank you. Just one, one more comment. Just, just to hear a pet peeve, I guess, is, is state funding for promises made and later rescinded, and my, the number-one example is the Quinn bill, and I don't have to tell you anything more about that. But we're now in the same situation with regional dispatch, with a few other things. And so, I would ask that you pay particular attention to when the state says, "If you do this, we'll help you," that we, they really will continue to help. I mean, I mean, the greatest one was, you know, regional transportation, school transportation.
Yeah, talk to Overham and Hampton, they can tell you all about that. We have never fulfilled our promise. I mean, we've done better, but we've never fulfilled our promise for regionalization. That's why, you know, when, when state says, "Okay, regionalization, or further regionalization, or you do this and we'll do, we'll support you," you know, usually that's the first one, economic times go down, that's usually the first to be, first to be hit.
You know, I started on the board, the state was paying 50% or 60% of the Quinn bill, which is, people don't know, that's supplemental pay for police officers who get advanced education. And then, all of a sudden, the state said, "We changed our mind, we're not paying for it anymore." The towns took a very big hit on that, and now we see the same thing on regional dispatch. If you go to regional dispatch, we'll support you. And now, all of a sudden, we, we went to regional dispatch, and now they're saying, "Well, we don't know if we're going to support it anymore," and that kind of thing, so.
Are you join, you're joined with Chickapi, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. We hope more towns get into it. But, I mean, the biggest thing with that is, the state is saying, "Yes, please do it, please do it." Now, they're paying money to all these communities who are installing their own 911 systems, and if you want us to regionalize, you know, use the state's money to incentivize it.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark.
Good, Dan.
Thanks. Senator, thanks for, thanks for coming, I really appreciate it. I guess first, I just want to say thank you, you know, for everything you've been doing, and just in early on, your first few months, and Jennifer as well. You're always accessible, approachable, you come to listen, and I really appreciate that. Couple of questions, because we're actually going to be talking about tonight, so for remote participation, could you just give me some feedback in terms of where?
Absolutely. So, the governor signed into law last week, the provisions that expired as of March 31st to extend the ability for communities to choose to do remote and/or hybrid versions of their municipal meetings. I've actually worked with Mass Municipal Association and filed legislation myself to make it permanent, and that bill will likely be going through the legislative process. We've seen over the last three years how well this has worked out, and what such a tool it's been for communities to actually participate in local government. But also, I have areas of my district on the northern half that are part of an education collaborative with 25, 30 school districts, trying to get quorum if you don't have the ability to have a hybrid or remote option, is nearly impossible to actually do. But I, we're also on legislation in order to make sure that state boards and commissions also have remote participation. We in Western Massachusetts were always at a disadvantage if you wanted to participate in a state board or a state commission that was based out of Boston, or Quincy, or Malden, like the Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed, because it takes us an entire day to either get out there, go to the meeting, and then come back. Now, having the ability to participate in a hybrid or remote fashion will allow people from Western Massachusetts to participate in their government a lot more efficiently. We're doing that in the legislature right now with our committee hearings. Each of the 7,000 bills that are filed each session gets a committee hearing and invites the public to testify on a particular bill. Now, you don't have to, you know, sit in the car for two and a half hours going into the State House in Boston for three minutes of testimony, you can log in on one of the platforms that we utilize now. In order to allow people to better, the ability to better participate in their democracy, we want to make sure we give tools to local communities. Mass Municipal Association, I've been working closely on, to make those provisions permanent, but also going beyond it, and also looking at our town meetings. The initial version of that, there was some question on how town meetings could operate. We've been working with, you know, here Becky Townsend and the Moderators Association to make sure they're part of all those discussions as well. So, we've extended it for two years, my bill would make it permanent.
Excellent. I appreciate that. And also, you mentioned the Chapter 70 and 90, and I actually went to the Western Mass and Rural Conference over the weekend, the MMA event, and that was like the big theme. It was just like, if you look at a photo, you just see the inequity of, from east versus west, funding. So, I guess, Smitty Pignatelli, he had filed some legislation as well, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Chapter 90 legislation that he had filed, but basically, it's going to take a look at, currently, it's based on, you know, population.
Employment.
And that doesn't help Long Meadow.
No.
So, really appreciate your efforts.
I have Belcher Town in my district. Belcher Town is, I think, the fourth, third or fourth largest community and land area in Massachusetts, with, with some of the, most amount of state roadways, and roadways themselves to take care of. They are at a total disadvantage with the funding formula because they're a bedroom community. They don't have the jobs that boost up their Chapter 98, the employment numbers that are on there. They do have the roadway mileage numbers, but they don't have that other factor or the population. And so, that's why that $25 million that the Senate put in to help out some of those lower-density communities, but the inequities for Western Massachusetts are massive. You know, we rely on our roads and bridges more than the eastern part of the state because our transportation system, we don't have the T. We do have PVTA, obviously, but we rely on our cars, we rely on our roads and bridges more than the eastern part of the state, and we're consistently put at a disadvantage because of how the formula doesn't benefit communities, bedroom communities like Long Meadow, like Belcher Town, that do have a lot of roadways and miles, but don't have the employment numbers to boost them up in Chapter 90. So, looking at that, a long term, of trying to fix that funding formula in order to help out communities like Long Meadow that have been disadvantaged, something that we're speaking as a Western Mass delegation on, on One Voice on, in Smitty's bill is, is a help to that.
Yeah, and it said, since 2012, I believe, the, the funding has stayed at $200 million?
It's, it's stayed at, you know, for the last decade, at $200 million. Obviously, that doesn't keep up with the rate of inflation, but the difference is from about 10 years ago, was it was just that $200 million. Now, there's a couple hundred, other million dollars of things like culverts in other areas for climate mitigation, that actually is boosting that funding up that communities can tap into, including this new pot that the Senate created just last week in our Chapter 90 bill. And those inequities go even further if you're a state-land-owned community, so you go out to the Berkshires, the payment in lieu of taxes for communities like that, you go out to some of the communities in the eastern part of the state, they're receiving so much more per acre of state land than we're receiving here in Western Massachusetts, and that inequity is, is definitely highlighted. The Auditor's Office has a few reports on that that are very interesting to take a look at as well.
I'm, I'm actually looking at it right now, from the event, but the other one was just, in terms of healthcare, I think you were pretty impactful in terms of, I don't know if it was legislation lately, but we've seen some closures happen right here in Long Meadow, and, and I get a lot of residents reaching out to me, so I think you could-
Yeah, the, seeing kind of the, the changes, the Bay State closing the urgent care center here in, in Long Meadow is definitely a blow to the community. As soon as it, got a call from Bay State, expressed my concern with it. There are some of the private-pay, non-Bay State-affiliated urgent cares that are around, but we're lacking in a lot of things. We're lacking in access to primary care. So, I actually have filed a bill this legislative session that directs the Department of Health and Human Services to look at the regional inequities and healthcare access for Western Massachusetts and develop a plan in order to address those inequities. I mean, we have inequities when it comes to the access to adolescent mental health beds. We don't have a single one right now until the Holyoke facility opens in the next few months. We have zero access here in Western Massachusetts. If you have a child that needs an inpatient bed, they either need to go to Connecticut, a different state, or to Worcester, and that's not right for, for, for our citizenry. But also, looking at access to things like primary care doctors. I'm personally out of a primary care doctor right now. My primary care doctor dropped me, and trying to find somebody that's taking in patients right now is pretty hard to do, and I'm, we're going to do that and see you as availability. But there are a lot of inequities for us here in Western Massachusetts when it comes to healthcare access. When you look at Bay State health services as well, and the finances of our hospital systems, they've been greatly impacted by, by the pandemic as well, and the level of services that they can provide, and the business model that they follow. They stopped all elective surgeries for quite a while, which, you know, helped, helped their bottom line on a lot of things, so when you suppress that for a while, they've gotten into the red for quite, for the last three years, because now the backlog with all those, all those, you know, elective surgeries are now piling up now, and the inability to attract doctors and retain doctors. So, needless to say, healthcare for our region is something that, that needs to, I think, greater attention and focus, and the bill that I filed, working with DPH, would actually, you know, help to develop a plan to address that.
Thank you.
Senator, thank you for coming in, you know, and, and thank you for answering all our questions and providing an update, and, you know, it's great to see you here. So, kind of similar to, you know, what Dan was just asking, you know, with your background at school committee, what we're seeing are teacher shortages everywhere, and school districts having trouble hiring teachers. Long Meadow is no different. We're, you know, obviously, a school district that's, you know, has a great reputation, and, you know, I think pays pretty well, but still are having issues. And so, I was kind of wondering, you know, what, if you had any insight into that, or, you know, yeah.
Well, we're trying to break down barriers to addressing the teacher pipeline issue going up and prom- going up and promoting education. So prior to joining the House, I spent 12 years working for the state university system that educates nearly a third of K through 12 educators here in the Commonwealth, and growing those programs and breaking down some of the affordability areas. Loan forgiveness is something that we're looking at for different things to attract people into the teaching profession, but also homegrown programs. Springfield Public Schools is actually working with Western, with Westfield State on a homegrown program that if you agree to go into the education field at Westfield State, and you agree to teach in the public schools after, you get a significant discount on your tuition and fee costs going into Westfield State to build that homegrown system. But it's also the barriers that we put up for educators as well. The MTEL test that is very expensive and actually disadvantage all the communities of color by the way this test is structured, and for low-income people. We're looking at alternative licensure pathways for people going into education to kind of grow that and breaking down, you know, a standardized test that's very expensive will help to break down barriers to get people that look like the students that they're teaching into the classroom more than we're doing right now. There's also some homegrown programs that districts are working on, and the state is looking at to lift up para-professionals and teachers aides so they can have a pathway that are, you know, good with, you know, good with children. I've been working alongside teachers and just need, you know, the credentialing and the support that they need in order to go into education. We've worked on language there on the Alternative Teacher Pathway credentialing, which is a bill that we worked on last session that passed through the budget process to help to alleviate that shortage. But we're also seeing shortages in particular areas as well. There was a desperate need for school psychologists in our schools, and the growing need for mental health clinicians and social workers is also a shortage area for our school districts right now. So it's not just limited to the teachers, classroom teachers. It's all the support systems that school systems need in order to help students with those wraparound services in order to get them to succeed. And breaking down some of those licensing barriers is something that we're looking at at the state level to continue to do to promote that.
Yeah. Great. And then, you know, there's been a lot of talk about student mental health and, you know, the issues that we've been seeing with that. Obviously, being in a school and how a school works and how it's a community, there's going to be, you know, that might bleed over to staff and teachers and their mental health as well, and their well-being. Are there, I mean, is this some, do you know of anything that's kind of like targeted to, you know, address that concern?
Well, I can tell you right now, my father's a high school teacher. He's the oldest guy in the level public school system. He's 74 and still teaching high school math. You know, he has seen, just since the, over the last three years with the pandemic and the isolation that students felt, and the varying different education models, you know, remote, hybrid, remote again, hybrid, in-person now, and the challenges that go with it, the burnout rate of staff is very high. You know, we look at the medical field, and the rate of return of nursing staff and doctors is, the burnout rate is very high there, and it's spilling into teaching as well. There are a lot of needs that children have and a lot of supports that are needed, and the wear and tear and the toll it takes on the mental health of educators themselves is concerning. I, offhand, I don't know of any programs that the state's working on, but as I mentioned before to Tom, when we look at a mental health bill ensuring that there is funding for school districts to access, not just for the students themselves, but also for the staff members, because we want to retain our staff. We don't want to have teachers that go into the profession and burn out right away. I mean, if you've ever done, I've done junior achievement before, where you go in and you're, you do, you're in a middle school classroom, teaching for an entire day, I never slept better before in my life than at the end of the day of being in a classroom. You're always on. And that's the difference with a lot of professions, you are always on. And the toll that that takes on you is really, really hard, even when you're an experienced legislate, legislator, experienced educator. So I think, you know, as we look at our mental health bills, ensuring that our workforce has access to some of the mental health services and the supports they need is essential as if we're going to retain a workforce within our school systems.
Right, yeah. I mean, I completely agree. I was a middle school teacher, hardest job I've ever...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Middle school, I call those the green berets of teachers. That's a tough age.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Senator.
Anything else from the board? Any parting words?
Just thank you, and, you know, use our office as a resource. If you are working on home rules, we are here to help with that, and looking forward to talking to Mark a little bit more about the Prop 2 and 1/2 issues and the research that you've done. Also say, you know, yeah, I was a school committee member when we combined two elementary schools a few years ago and built a brand-new elementary school. I know that you're in the feasibility study phase right now for your middle schools, and, you know, I've talked to parents within the community, talked to school committee members, talked to the superintendent, talked to the principals, and anything that you need throughout the building process with the MSBA, and navigating that and sharing kind of best practices and what we saw when we went through that process in Ludlow. You can, if you do go down the road to combine, you know, middle schools together, you can give them small middle school feel within a larger school when you combine two of them. We did that at our elementary school, or two elementary schools in Ludlow. We have almost an 800-person elementary school right now, but when you go in it, it feels like a small school because of the way that you design it. And so as you go through the process, Representative Ash and myself will be right there alongside, advocating with the building authority to ensure that you get your fair share of reimbursement, but also making sure that you can navigate any of the complexities at that level. So just wanted to offer that up too.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Next up on our agenda, we have the Cooley Brook Core Team Resident Advisor Appointment. And I know Beneath had an interesting idea on this.
Well, so, yeah, so my idea was that, you know, we have two very qualified candidates. And, you know, it was just throwing around the idea of, could we expand the working group to include two resident, you know, slots? So both could be included. I'm not necessarily saying that that's what we should do, but just, you know, something that maybe wanted to bring up and see if you all...
Corinne, do you think that would be feasible?
Yes, I don't think it would be infeasible. I hadn't thought about it. So the, I have thought, been thinking about it a little bit. The, I think there's some pros and cons. Pros are, right now, the core team, as the Conway School calls it, is majority staff. Well, three, three staff, and then John Brezinahan, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, who's a resident but also has an official capacity. And then the idea behind the resident advisor is that they wouldn't necessarily have to be affiliated in any official capacity with Long Meadow, they're just giving the resident perspective. So we do have two residents on there already. The, there's, the point of this work with the Conway School is to get and develop public engagement and input around Cooley Brook and ideas for Cooley Brook. So in that sense, having more than one resident, you know, advisor certainly helps meet that goal. I guess my only concerns would be that the more people who are on it, especially those who don't conform with the, you know, like the staff, the staff who are on there, it's part of their job to be attending during these workday meetings. So the more people who are on it who might have other obligations during the workday, the harder it might be to schedule that large of a group, which I think at that point would be, off the top of my head, maybe six people. But I don't think, I mean, it's one additional person, so.
I think we just, we have two very qualified people who I think are coming at it from a slightly different perspective. So, and we're both on the previous iteration of this group with the Conway School. So if, I would be in favor of putting them both on. They both said that they have time to do it, and I think that they can both give a really important perspective. So I would be in favor of that if that's, go ahead, Dan.
So I do think it's a valid point that Beneath makes, and I certainly, you know, I can also agree, Josh, with what you're saying. My only concern is with this process, you have people that maybe backed out. Someone throws their hat in the ring, they back out, and because maybe they felt the other candidates did a really good job, or they're very qualified, and then maybe they took their hat out of the race. We see that with elections. So I think this is a, probably one of the hardest votes that I'm going to make to this date, but I think that we owe the process, we need to go through the process, and we've already done that. We have two candidates, and I'm ready to make a motion to appoint someone. One person.
Mark?
Dan, I appreciate your comments, and I understand your concerns. I, I think the biggest for me is, and I, it's the first I heard of appointing two people, so I was prepared to vote for one person, but I think the approach of these two candidates is so different, not to mention the fact that they both appear to have the time to be able to do it, that I think they'll bring very, very different perspectives, not only different ones, but ones that the group needs to hear. You know, whether it's Dave Marinelli's concern about the, you know, the trees in the boat park and all the things he's done, and, or Kristen's other concerns that she identified. I think that, that it just broadens the diversity, and at this point, I'm not sure that people who may have applied but didn't is necessarily as critical as getting the broadest input of ideas to this group, because I think, as Corinne indicated, most of them are staff members, and we're trying to get a diversity of public opinion. So, you know, I hadn't heard it before, but it sounds like not a bad idea to go both ways.
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, this is an example of what I love about Long Meadow. The type of people we have that apply to be on our boards and committees are so qualified, overqualified, it really helps us. And, you know, in my years of the board, on the board, we've made so many good decisions that it's just, isn't luck that we make some of these good decisions. And so it's the people we have on our, as advisors, and, yeah, these are two qualified people, and I guess I would definitely see the need to have both of them. It wouldn't be a problem for me at all. I think it would be helpful.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Dave Marinelli and Kristen Carnahan to the Cooley Brook Core Team Resident Advisor, I'm sorry, as the resident advisors.
It would be you. Move the question.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I'm...
So move.
Yeah.
I'll second you.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous, great. And thank you to everyone who applied, and to Kristen and Dave. It was really, I did not know how to make a decision. I couldn't share this idea with everyone because I would break open meeting law, but I think it was a good one. So thank you for the thought, Beneath. All right, resident comments. Do we have anybody? Mike?
Just a reminder, if you are in the Zoom, you can press the raise hand icon if you would like to make public comment.
Making sure you made it.
There doesn't seem to be anyone.
Okay, we'll move on to the Select Board comments. I just got one first, Mark. So I went to the first diversity, equity, and inclusion meeting last week, and it was a really productive meeting. Mike led it, and everyone introduced themselves. We have, we interviewed everyone, but it was great to see everyone together, and really a passionate group, and I think they're off to a good start. They elected Anne Marie Martinez as Chair, and I think she's going to be really fantastic. So I look forward to hearing from that, from that group. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. I just wanted to report on a few committee meetings that I went to that the board should know about. I already mentioned when Senator Olivero was here about the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority meeting, that they approved the budget for next year, and it was pretty sad that, from my perspective, they used $4 million in one-time federal carryover funds to balance a budget. You just can't keep going that way, but there was no other way to do it. And I asked the question, what are you going to do next year? And they said, we got, we got 10 months to figure that out. So the answer is they don't know. And, you know, Long Meadow only has, you know, the G5 is the only bus route, comes into Long Meadow a couple times a day, but, you know, UMass and all, it's, it's a big deal, and so it's pretty problematic. The other thing is, I went to the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust meeting, and I think the board needs to know, and more importantly, people at home need to know, it's a gem. I mean, we are, they, the, two things that they, they talked about, and they talk about a lot of stuff at every meeting, but they had their audit of the last fiscal year, and their audit is not only a clean audit, but it, they did well, they have a couple hundred thousand dollars left over that, you know, it's not really a profit, but they had money that they can use. I think it's, you know, of all the places that we could be using for providing medical benefits to our employees and retirees, and for those of you who don't know, there's the GICC, which is the government insurance company, then there's the MIIA, the Mass Inter Local Insurance Agent. Scannick Valley is regional, they do a phenomenal job. I mean, one of the discussions was interesting, that the federal governments come out and said, you've got to offer a low-cost option, that medical plans have to come up with a low-cost option. I forgot the percentage, but it's like less than 8% or something of somebody's revenue. And Scannick Valley did the analysis, and they have consultants who've worked for them. The consultant came back and said, actually, this low-cost analysis plan, it's got a $5,000 deductible, which is, for me, it's catastrophic health injury. They said, oh, by the way, it costs like, you know, a dollar and a quarter less than the Scannick Valley's plan they already have. So I mean, you know, they're going to have to offer it because the federal government requires, but it's just an indication of what a good job Scannick Valley's going in. Long Meadow does well, we're represented on that group. You know, Arlene Miller is the chair, she does a great job. Paul Pesterzic's their treasurer and watches the funding, and I think people just ought to know what a, what a great job Scannick Valley does with those funds. So I think they ought to do that. Went to a recycling commission meeting last week, last Tuesday, and the announcement that came out of it, is important for people at home to know, is that, that the town, this is the DPW, but the recycling commission's involved, is, is getting hit with a lot of spurious costs from trash collection, and we'll talk about them in a second. And so they've, they've gone back to waste management, said you need to enforce the regulations. For example, people buy a big screen TV, you know, they take that polystyrene or styrofoam that comes in, and they chop it up and stick it in the recycling bin. Well, you know, if Pioneer, if waste management throws it in the truck, it gets down to the MRF, the reset, and the MRF rejects the whole truck worth. So instead of getting $10 a ton for, for the recycling, we pay $100 a ton to, because it's now got to be disposed of. And so, you know, we're going back to waste management and saying, you've got to start enforcing the regulations. You know, don't take things that aren't recyclable. If somebody puts more than a, you know, if their barrel is overflowing, you can't take their barrels. So people in town who are violating the rules of our trash collection will, over the next couple of weeks, start seeing, we expect, waste management more enforcing the regulations. And so people need to understand that it's as much the town requiring waste management to enforce it as it is waste management being the bad, I mean, they're, they're enforcing it, but they're not, you know, these rules are longstanding, and they, they cost the town real money, and so people need to understand that, that the, we're going to start enforcing that. So that's through the DPW with waste management, but the recycling committee knew about it. Finally, I wanted to talk about the Pioneer Valley Planning Commissions. It's called the MPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Organization. They, they're the group that looks at traffic projects, funding, federal, state, local funding for, for traffic projects, because we've been talking about them, and I just, you know, again, we're represented there. Walter Gunn is, is on that from the PVPC, and, and I'm actually the, the, I think, the alternate for District 1. The primaries, Jim Berry, who's, I think, from Belcher Town or something. But I, I listen in, because the two projects they talked about are both, one is paving Route 5 and Converse Street. It's the, it's resurfacing the intersection and intersection improvements at Route 5 and Converse Street. It's a $7.36 million project. It's now on the plans, we all talk about it any time, day, any day now, for, it's called Federal Fiscal Year 2025. So we'll see it in 2026, because Federal Fiscal Year starts October 1st. So we're not going to see that until 2026, and it's still subject to being bumped. Now, generally, it won't be, but you never know, and you have to say it's subject to being bumped. The other one, which is the one we've talked about... to say it's subject to being bumped. The other one, which is the one we've talked about more frequently here, is the Route Five repaving, which is the whole project on Route Five. That's, and I use the term loosely, penciled in for Federal Fiscal Year 2028, which means it's 2029 before it's even possible to be here. That's a 13, today's dollars, it's 13.28 or 23 million dollars. And, you know, federal money is $1.6 million and then there's state and local money, that kind of thing. But, we always talk about, well, they're going to be repaving Route Five imminently. I'm not going to be, it's 2029. I mean, it's, it's six years from now at the earliest.
I hope you're around.
Well, but, I mean, it's, it's six years from now that, before they, yeah. So, people need to understand that, that what sounds like it's an imminent, you know, work to be done, it's way off. And, you know, in, in every meeting, things get juggled a little bit, you know? Somebody from one town says, we need this more important than the other and things get moved from Chickapita Holyoke or Holyoke to, to Belcher Town or Belcher Town to Ludlow, whatever it is. And the mayors are all there or the DPW directors are there and, you know, they're kind of jockeying for federal funds. And I think we're holding our own, but that's the current status. So, people need to understand that neither of those projects is coming tomorrow.
Well, thanks for all that, Mark. And just for people who are concerned about the recycling policy, and I'm glad to hear that, there's, DPW has a lot of resources on the website with what is recyclable. I look at it all the time because I am often wrong when I'm trying to recycle. So, it's definitely, keep an eye on that and don't get us busted. Anything else for the rest of the board? Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. Wrote a few things down here. Went to the Conservation Commission meeting on the 22nd, attended the Finance Committee meeting, Mark, I think, I know you were there as well. The Finance Committee, I don't want to speak for them, but Article Three, which was the IT study, and then Article Eight, they voted not to recommend. And then also had, went to the Long Range Planning Steering Committee. I wanted to mention Cheryl Thibodeau was elected chair. Cheryl will do a great job. I was excited that she was elected. Also, Mark, I think you've been attending some of the long-range planning focus groups as well. I went to three out of four of those. They're an hour and a half session each over the past week or so. And was at the School Committee meeting, Tree Committee meeting, did the Earth Day cleanup this week at Wolf Swamp Fields. We were pulling tires out of the swampy area, blankets. I couldn't tell you how many nip bottles, which is another thing maybe we want to talk about another time. But, oh, and then on Saturday, I spent the day at the Western Mass and Rural Conference for the MMA. So, productive couple of weeks. I'm glad the Senator was here. We went over a lot of the items that he talked about today. So, I'm hopeful that the, that Western Mass will hopefully finally see its fair shape when it comes to Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 funding, so.
Maybe they'll run the money down to repay Route Five.
2029.
All right. Any other comments? All right, you're up, Corinne.
All right. Okay, so the Town Managers Report. Start with the Ecode project update. So, as you're all aware, we had a temporary delay on the Attorney General's Office approving our Articles 24 and 25 from the special town meeting. We had to post in the reminder and on the Town Clerks Board that residents had an additional 21 days to make an objection due to a clerical error. And we received no objections from residents, so we sent that back in and within a couple of days, received news back from the AG's office that warrant Articles 24 and 25 are approved, which is great news. Those are the warrant articles reformatting the zoning code into the new Ecode 360 format. So, the timeline for that now is that Ecode is going ahead and moving forward with the updates to their version of our code. They're going to publish some physical copies and they will also be uploading the, or making the site ready. They don't have a strict timeline, but they anticipate that the final editorial work will be completed by April 12th. And depending on the printing queue, the publications will be sent out around that time. And the Ecode site will be publicly available a few days before we receive the book so that they happen around the same time. And that's great news for the warrant article that you all voted on, or the warrant that you all voted on last week or two weeks ago, because we can keep that same formatting. Moving on to Wolf Swamp Fields. So, Wolf Swamp Fields were opened today, April 3rd. We implemented a soft opening that will be going on through June with a grand opening planned for late August or early September. The primary user groups for Wolf Swamp Fields are girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, little league and soccer. Building renovations are still ongoing and the bathrooms, I was not able to check in with the Parks and Rec Director today, but I, it was looking very likely that the bathrooms are not going to be available during this first week. The work is still ongoing there, but there is a portable ADA unit out in the fields and the dugouts are currently being built and the flagpole is ordered with an install estimated in June. And then a little bit of an update on the staffing. They had only one applicant for a facility attendant, so they're working on coverage for bathrooms and the concessions, and the concession stand. And the company who won the maintenance bid has yet to sign and return the contract. So, I believe they are, they did just get a reminder and then they're going to move on to the next bidder if it still is unsigned. Greenwood Pool update. Only Greenwood Pool will be open this year during, due to ongoing structural concerns with Reynolds Pool. They have already begun, Parks and Rec Department has already begun selling pool passes and to date, they have one applicant for a manager, zero for pool supervisor, and 12 for lifeguards. They want to fill 16 positions for lifeguards and the director is confident that they will have enough applications trickle in over the next few months that the, all the positions will be filled. They did have a glut of applications for gatekeeper and they only need two, but most of those applications are for, are from people under 16, so they can't be lifeguards. They plan to open the pool around June 17th. And then finally, our rain barrel program. So, as has been previously reported to you, we are participating in the Great American Rain Barrel Program this year, which makes rain barrels and accessories available to Long Meadow residents at a discounted rate. The town strongly encourages the use of rain barrels as part of its townwide conservation program and collected rainwater aids in controlling stormwater runoff during heavy rains and helps during times of drought to reduce municipal water demand. Collected rainwater can be used for watering gardens, lawns, washing cars, and many other non-potable uses. And through the Great American Rain Barrel, we're offering three types of rain barrels and several accessories to make installation easy and convenient. As of March 27th, we had sold 90 rain barrels and the deadline to order through this program is April 12th with pickup at the DPW on Earth Day, Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. We are, we did put a final push out on social media, probably do one more actually, and we're hoping to have 100 or more sold by the, by the deadline.
Thank you, Corinne. Just on the, on the pool, is there, is pool supervisor a necessary position? Can the pool open if one of these, if there are no applicants?
Do you know the answer to that?
No, not officially, no.
Yeah, okay. I'll ask Barry and get back to you.
I'd say, I know that every year this is hard for us and just want to make it as easy as possible, but. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Corinne. Moving on to old business, motion to accept the minutes.
Yeah, I have a correction. I, that's, that might be a couple of typos, but under the Fire Department report, it says Mr. Gold mentioned the truck replacement schedule of replacing one every three years and questioned if the cycle still stood, used. I may have misspoken if I said that because the cycle is at once every seven years. So, I'd ask that we change that to once every seven years because we have three. We buy one every seven years and each one has the last 21 years. So, I'd like to make that change and with that change and a couple of typos, I'll make a motion to approve them. That's...
Well, second motion.
All right. Any further? All those in favor? All right, moving on to the extension to the open meeting law temporary provisions. Mark, this is your brainchild and hopefully...
Not much of a brainchild. You know, I listened to what people said. I know, Tom, you had indicated that there were things that you wanted to make sure people came here before us. So, it tried to bring those in. It essentially said, says that, you know, we're getting Eversource or somebody who wants a petition for a poll or something. It seems to be working remotely, but if somebody, and so the two things I used is if you're petitioning for a new liquor license or if you're here for a hearing, whether it's a dog hearing or a liquor violation hearing, we expect the people to be in person, here in person. Other than that, the system that we have seems to be working well. And then the last paragraph says, oh, by the way, any other board or committee can adopt this if they want to by changing it from select board to their committee. And they, if they make any other individual recommendations, they have to notify the select board. Because I can imagine the ZBA or the, some of those committees may want to make some other recommendations about who, who needs to appear in person and who doesn't need to appear in person. But for the most part, I think this covers pretty much what we're doing now or what we want to do.
Yeah, I think, I'm happy with it because we did have that one situation where they actually did the work before they got our approval, you know, with the poll that goes to the...
Being here wouldn't stop that.
You know, and, and that was, you know, they, they, we did find them, thanks to Mark Gold, and they paid it. So, that was good. But, yeah, this looks great. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, I think the exceptions are, are a good idea. I don't, we don't see a lot of new liquor licenses, but the other ones are very pertinent.
Well, I think, as you said, any lawyer worth his salt would probably want to be here, but...
Yeah.
So, might as well put it in writing.
Yeah. So, I, I think this is a smart idea and hopefully the laws allowing us to do this are made permanent.
I would also just suggest that if you could possibly wait to vote on this till the next meeting anyway, because we are running it by town council just for the purpose of...
Okay, I knew we were doing that. I know, but already have.
Yeah, and we're going to hear back this, hopefully this week on some comments and then if you could just take a vote at the next meeting, that would be awesome.
Sure, yeah. It's new business today anyway. Okay, great.
I had a question about it. So, in terms of when, you know, senior center, adult center is hosting an event, would they, are we suggesting they have to come in front of the board in person every time? I just want...
No, no, no. That, not at all. It's, the only people who have to are, it says, testify, requesting approval of a petition or testifying at a hearing shall be governed by the, so, you, you know, employees representing utility company don't need to. Making a representative, requesting approval of a petition or testifying at a hearing may participate through remote connection, so they can remote, participate through remote connection, except for the following situations, which identified individual must be physically present, and that's seeking a new liquor license and individuals attending. A new liquor, a one-day liquor license isn't a new liquor license.
So...
Maybe if we changed that to permanent liquor license?
Or annual or seasonal.
Annual seasonal license.
Good question, Dan.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on that? We'll bring it.
The only other one that I had was, we heard from the Senator, so as part of the process, right, there's, if I wanted to go for a liquor license, I would still be able to go remotely in front of the Liquor Commission, right?
We are the Liquor Commission.
But in terms of, at the state, state level...
You don't even have to show up there. You just put it in the paperwork.
Yeah, we're the only one who, there's only hearings for us. If you have an ABCC violation, I don't know what their role is, but none of my clients have gotten it. But, yeah, that's, that's a different situation. So, yeah, we're the only entity that does a hearing and so we have a role that if you're going for a new, you'd have to come in person. And I guess on that point, do we, the only thing that is a big change that we may want to bring in is if somebody is changing the manager, because the manager is the boots-on-the-ground person who's enforcing the laws and is the one who, we like to give our warning that watch out because we're going to test you on that. Do we want new managers to come in or are we comfortable with that being remote? Go ahead, Tom.
Well, we've had managers come in saying they're going to do a job and then we've caught them selling liquor to minors. So, yeah, I think we need to have them come in. And we've had folks come in when they've violated and, and then within two years, they violate again. So, I, I, you know, we're sort of like the court.
Right. Well, so if we look them in the eyes and say, don't do that, it may not matter if they're online or not, but maybe, maybe it would help. So, that would be, that would be my only thought on one. So, it could be petition seeking new annual seasonal liquor license or appointing a new manager of record.
You got that, Mike?
Yep. Sorry, I was, the screen for us, but yeah, appointing a new manager or...
Of record.
Of record, yeah.
Because when we approve the whole group, not everyone's here.
No, the only person who has to appear is the manager, technically. Okay.
Tom, when you say approve, so we renew them?
When we renew them?
They don't show up at, nobody shows up.
No one shows up and renewes.
There's no changes that...
It's not, you have to petition for a change otherwise.
This is for renewal appointments.
So, it's just changes that, good to see them.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't, we don't want everyone coming in once a year. It'd be nice to have an audience for once, but...
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question on this? The section we were just talking about, 7B2, one of the examples that's listed in the individuals attending a hearing before the select board is a zone change referral request. As we'll be discussing in a minute on the agenda, the action on behalf of the select board is not, is not, I'm blanking on the word. It's not optional. The, the vote has to happen to refer to the planning board. It's not discretionary is the word I'm looking for. And the, the actual hearing is with the planning board. It's not with the select board. So, I, I don't, I'm not arguing for it not to be included in this list, but I'm wondering if there is a reason, if, what the reasoning is to include it in this list.
Go ahead, Mark.
I didn't think, is, is a zoning change approved, required in here?
Yeah, it's 7B2, they would be, they must be physically present.
Yeah, you said zone.
So, I, I felt that that was a good idea to keep in. We don't get a lot of these, but I think it is important to, even though we have to vote on it, which we'll get to shortly, I think it's important to explain to people what they're trying to do. It's kind of the first time to introduce it to people. And we had it with the, upon Realty, I think there was something lost on doing it by Zoom because people had questions about it. And so, I, I would certainly, if people wanted to make that not have to be in person, I just thought it's a good idea because that's kind of our, not that we can say we don't like it, but people can hear about it.
Another, is because we're talking about technology and, you know, like the technology of a wristwatch is 200-plus years. They work great. Computers are not that great. And we could be communicating something to someone online. They may not hear everything we say and there's no way for us to tell if they've heard it. So, that's why having, for sort of events, we need to know that they hear us and we hear them, you know, without any, you know, distortion.
Well, I would say just, we should keep Corinne's point in mind when we get to 11A and then maybe it'll change people's minds. But, that was my thought on it. I think that's a good point, Corinne, but I think that that's an important thing to do. We just don't have it that often and I think it's a good to have a bite at the apple so people know what's going on. All right, so we will have that come up after town council reviews. On the electric vehicle charging update, I don't know if, well, people in town may be curious what's happening here because now that Wolf Swamp is having their soft openings, there's a charger there. You see the charger at the adult center. In furtherance of trying to figure out what our rate should be, Corinne and I had an hour meeting with Eversource last week and with the stated question, what is the new rate? Because Eversource had a DPU petition and got a new rate. After an hour, the answer was, well, it depends, and which was supremely confusing. I wouldn't say unhelpful because the problem... I won't say unhelpful because the problem with telling us the rate is you can't set the rate until you know how much the individual charger is going to be used. And each have their own meter is what was explained to us. So unless we had an idea of how much they were going to be used, we can't set a rate. If we can't, if we have to set, if, if we're just guessing at a rate, we put it too high, no one's going to use it. We put it too low, Long Meadow loses a bunch of money. Using the proxy rate is probably not going to be useful, the tennis court that Corinne looked at before and which gave us our high rate. So after much back and forth in questions, including Joe Mitchell, who's the community relations, even admitted to us that he was confused about what the rate would be. One of the things that the engineer we were speaking with proposes that we bring in a third party, which I know Mark will be happy to hear about. And Corinne and I talked about, about this after and I really, I think that this is, we, in my opinion, we have to do that because otherwise we're guessing at a rate and the rate has to be changed based on usage. So you can't, you can guess one month, be wrong, try to fix it, we'd be voting on it every month. And that does not make any sense to me, we're not experts in this. Best case scenario, we'd hire a consultant to tell us what the rate should be. And as Mark says, that's not our core function. And I, it doesn't, I don't think we can do it. The other, what the more important part to me is that if we have, if we have a third party servicing our chargers, they become the customer, the third party company, and they will get a better rate than us. And they, or even if they don't, they'll be better at adjusting as they go so they can make, because they'll be in the business of trying to get people to use their chargers. So they can have a slim margin or whatever they want to do, but they'll make it so people actually want to use it. Because the point of having them is so people use them. And I don't think we have a feasible and smooth way of doing that. So that's, and I know that Lynn had had some preliminary conversations with third parties on doing this. And so I, I think that that's what we need to do. It's just a conversation now, but I wanted to bring that up and report in that meeting, which really my, my eyes were spinning, I could not follow it. And I, not, not the smartest guy in the room, but I, I should have been able to get more. So I don't think we're in place to do it. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I just want to make sure, this is your, the recommendation is to bring in a third party who essentially manages them on behalf of themselves? And is there going to be some arrangement between them and the town? I mean, one of my suggestions to Lynn was, we just charge them some nominal lease fee, like 50 bucks a month or.
Right.
Some, something nominal because they, they've got it on our, you know, now it's our equipment that's going to be on our.
That's what we need to figure out. Is there any holding costs that we have, we want to cover that, so we don't want to.
But basically, we want to put it on a separate meter, have them pay for the electricity, have them pay. And it's great, it's not a core, like you said, it's not a core function of the town of Long Meadow. And once we do that, I think there are others that we want to put in town too.
I, I'm okay with not, with doing something that's out of our core function. This one's so far outside of it, it's, it's light years away. The one thing we did talk about, Corinne and I also talked about, was keeping maybe the DPW one just for town vehicles. And so then we can.
Then we should move it behind the fence and take the, take the credit card off. But seriously, I think, you know, move it behind the fence for town, town vehicles.
Right, well, that's something we can.
We can talk about it, yeah.
Or even if it, if you can't activate it without, unless you're a town, have town access.
Whatever, but, but it's going to be town vehicles.
Another thing is, is the town increases their use of electric vehicles, they're going to need to charge more than, they're going to need to charge wherever they are in town. That's one of the problems is when they looked at using more electrical vehicles is that you need to have charging stations across town that people have, get access to. So then we'd be paying, you know, this third party to charge our vehicles for, on machines that we put in. And that's, well, I look at that top bit.
Maybe, but that would be, we'd still probably be getting a better rate than what the town would get.
That's part of what we negotiate in the, in the.
Sure, yeah, we can talk to Lynn about that. That's, that's a good thought. Because yeah, it's going to happen more and more, we're going to have more and more vehicles. But yeah, we're just, really, Corinne and I talked after and we're kind of shocked by how the meeting went. And I, I came out of it thinking, this is our only way forward, we have to do it. So.
Did EverSource provide like an idea of like a range of how much these rates will fluctuate?
No, it depends.
Okay.
Because you have to look at past, past practice.
Yeah.
And, and there's like five different, go ahead, Corinne.
Sorry, it also just depends on like how many vehicles are charging at a time, how many vehicles charge over the pay period, like the billing period, if it got used at all. If it only got used once, we're going to get charged the maximum, but we don't know what the maximum is. Where if it gets charged, if it's all the time, it will be a little bit, but it won't be the same every month. It's, there was no answer.
So basically, it's kind of like filling up a gas tank, like you'll kind of pull up and see what the rate is, right?
Except they don't tell you, they don't tell you until after you put the gas in your tank. That's the difference.
Yeah.
It's not posted and they don't tell you until after you put it in.
Yeah, so, right, and so the, the problem is, we're, we're just completely guessing. And other towns may say, we're okay with subsidizing. I, I don't even feel comfortable subsidizing because we don't know how much we would be subsidizing. And I'm just, I don't want us to take a big hit. We don't have that kind of flexibility.
So the federal infrastructure bill that, that was passed, you know, many months ago now, has a very large incentive, you know, one, one of the goals is that, that there'll be electric vehicle chargers every 50 miles on the interstate highway system. And the state, and the federal government's prepared to heavily incentivize the installation of those. And so I'd had, based on that, I had some discussions with Lynn about Long Meadow taking some areas that we had in town and leasing them to some company who wants to get all the federal tax benefits and all that kind of stuff and put these things in and literally we'll collect X dollars a month for leasing the land to them.
Like Bark Hall?
Bark Hall, yeah, Bark Hall, Turnoff is one, a couple of other things. And, and I personally believe that the early bird's going to get the worm on this because if you put in your, you know, your charger or any charger and you get the federal subsidy, that blocks out federal subsidies for 49 miles on either side, you know. But if somebody else beats us to the punch, it's going to be a tough slog to get somebody to put that in. And so I think that your proposal, Josh, for what we're doing in town, leads us to a, an opportunity for a, you know, a relationship, I guess, with companies who might want to look at doing this elsewhere in town. And I think it's, like I said, I, you know, just what I knew about the, the electric rate and the surge pricing, all that kind of stuff, you know, we'll never get anybody to use it because they'll never know what they're getting charged. And, and, you know, I, you know, you had a major company who runs these things, they're going to bundle, you know, 200 or 500 or whatever, of these vehicle chargers around New England and get a single rate from whoever the electric supplier is. And so they're going to know it, their charges, but we're running off the, the adult center with surge pricing off the adult center and a different one off of the DPW, a different one on Wolf Swamp Field. And, you know, I, the question is, how do we sign up and how do we move forward with this?
I, I think that's going to be a, it's a Lynn question to pull forward, well.
Count me in on the people who think that's the one.
Yeah, as soon as EverSource said, and then they become our customer, my eyes lit up and said, okay, good. So I, I think I'm excited about this because I, I want these things to work. I want, I want to see people charging on them all the time and I think this is the way to do it.
And, and the analogy is a gas station, you know, the town doesn't own gas stations, we never owned gas stations. When cars were coming out in the 1910s, I can't imagine the town of Long Meadow putting gas stations. We let private companies put up gas stations and maybe we gave them land, I don't know. But, but it's the same kind of thing, you know, you know, make it available, let private companies do it and, you know, make it, make sure it's in our community so our residents can take advantage of it.
Any other board, go Dan.
So Mark, at the MMA event that we went to and Tom, you also were there, I sat in at EV vehicles. One thing they didn't talk about was the actual price and charging folks for using these stations. I'm just wondering if maybe we could bring that group in and they have some experience.
Yeah, so I, the woman who's, we talked to, Lynn sent me a note and asked for her contact. So she and Lynn are, are talking. So I think your, your suggestion is great, Dan, and I think it's being done, but I'll follow up with, with Lynn.
We talked about this with EverSource, the, the two people they suggested we speak with, Lynn had already been in contact with. And I think the problem kept coming back to, well, how much have you been using it? And they, consultants cannot help us until we have a history.
Okay.
And that's where the guessing comes in. But yeah, anyone who has experience with this, I think it would be useful, get on our side.
And I think the people at home want to hear that, from what we were told back then, that if we were national grid, there, there would not be these, there might be different issues, but there would not be these issues. It's, it's strictly an EverSource, EverSource rate and tariff issue. But.
Right.
That doesn't mean there wouldn't be other issues. So people say, well, in East Long Meadow or, well, East Long Meadow's national grid and, and, you know, so don't compare what we've got in Western Mass with EverSource with what I was having national grid. And that, again, it may be a whole different set of problems.
Well, we were told last year that, yeah, there's a, national grid has an EV tariff that, that sets a price. And EverSource did not go for that.
Right.
They have this other insane thing that I, I couldn't spend an hour explaining and it wouldn't make any sense, so. All right. Moving on to the last piece of new business, signed final 2023, you know, town meeting warrant. Mike, do we need to take any action on this?
No action, you guys voted on everything in the last meeting. I'll pass it around to, for you to sign at the end of the meeting. But I did want to take the opportunity to just present the warrant one last time to the board as well as, you know, give it to the, to the public ahead of it going out to print as well. Obviously with the insert, once it goes out to print, it'll include the budget message, all of the breakdowns, some graphs, some rules for, for town meeting. It, all, all in all, it's about a 40 to 45 page document when it's all compiled. So that'll, like Josh mentioned earlier, that'll be on the website on April 11th, next Tuesday. And then it'll also be delivered, including opt outs to all residents in town on April 20th, ahead of the May 9th town meeting. And then educational videos and other promotional material will be out, you know, within the next coming weeks as well.
And I assume it'll also be in the library and all the places.
Yep, yep, good point, all the five, actually it says on the certificate, on the signing page, constable has to post it in all five precincts, you know, at least seven days prior to the meeting, so.
Thanks, Mike. And then moving on to new business, so I will talk about this. And Corinne, I think you drafted this, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I had a question and this just came up from the, I think we've had this coming twice, where we, we have to take a vote and my question is always, well, what if we vote no? And so I said, well, why don't we just have a policy that we have to vote yes? Which seems kind of silly, but just in the future, if it ever comes up, if we have a zoning change petition that comes to us under state law, we have to send to the planning board for the planning board to hold a hearing and make a recommendation. And we don't have a choice, but we have to vote on it. So I recommended that we put this policy in place to make that clear. And so there's nobody obnoxious like me who asks that question.
Josh, I mean, to me, the, the policy is superfluous only because the state laws supersedes this policy. State law says you got to pass it on to the zoning board of, board of appeals. So, you know, I don't understand why, you know, I, I mean, like I said, it, it's superfluous. You know, we can pass it and we will pass it, but it, it, it doesn't say anything because we're, we're required by state, we might as well list all the other state laws, have a policy for all the other state laws that we're required to, to obey, you know. And, and I understand that this comes up and we've been asked several times. And frankly, I was one of the people early on who was asked, do, what if I say no? They said, you can't, state law says you have to. And I was told that once and the next time I said, okay, we're just going to move it along because I know what we have to do. And I think, you know, it's, it's an education thing for the select board members rather than a policy for the select board members saying, you know, you don't, we don't have a choice.
Well, with the policy, I'm not thinking of our board, I'm thinking of a, a future board where something is coming for the board, the town hates it, somebody's trying to petition, put an industrial zone on Long Meadow Street and there will be pressure to vote no.
But you would think that somebody would know, go to that select board and say, you don't have the right to, and, and frankly, a, a good attorney for the, whoever's coming for the petition would say, here's the state law, we're just here as a formality because you have to say, I mean, I, I don't really care, Josh. I mean, we're, we're going to do it, we're going to pass it and it's not going to mean anything because it's superfluous in life.
Well, I, I agree with Mark, it's, it's just more bureaucracy. It's just a duplication of what the state's telling us. And, and we, you know, we're not professionals in this area, so we always count on a town manager to say, okay, this is what's happening, you turn it over to the appeals board, zoning board. And we've always done it, we've never had a problem. I, I don't understand where this is coming from because we all, you know, there's these strict deadlines and then the, the real pressure is on the zoning board. You know, because if they don't follow protocol, they, you know, they're taking to court.
We're going to be taking to court.
I'll add something, that's one of the reasons why this i- is, is here is because of the fact that it initiates such an important process after your referral vote. It initiates the Form 7 process, which then goes to the planning board. And then from there goes to the town clerk. And it really just begins this contingency of a flow chart, if you will, as to how operations run from the time it comes to the select board through the time it has to go to the attorney general's office after the town meeting vote. And when you have four, five or six that happen in one year, you know, having that, it, it may come up more, more than once. So it's important that I guess something's in writing, but I don't know what that in writing has to be, is I guess what I'm.
It is in writing, it's the law.
Right, right, exactly.
Josh, but from my position then, it's not a policy because the policy says to me something we've chosen to do and, and ask other select boards to follow until they decide to change the policy. This ought to say, state law regarding the receipt of petitions for zoning recognition change and zoning bylaw amendments, it's a state law. And just say, as required by MGL, okay, Mass General Law, and it just states the state law. I'll vote for that because that is the state law.
Okay, so the, the state law says shall refer, the state law says shall vote. And that's, well, that was part of our question here, we asked Jesse, what do we do? And the answer is you have to vote.
Right.
So that's, but that's not the state law. I, you know what, it's up, we don't have to do it, but I, that's my thinking. Where I'm not trying to influence this board, I'm trying to influence a future board because you have to take a vote.
But it's a bylaw here and so it has to go on a warrant, right?
No, this is a state law. MGL is Mass General Laws.
Okay.
So if we didn't vote, if a, a select board did not vote yes within 14 days, you, this town will get sued. And, well, that, that's the reason for it, we have to take a vote. It, that's not what the law says, the law says shall refer. So I'm clarifying what the town, what the select board must do.
Say that again, Josh, the state law says the town shall refer.
Right.
That, that doesn't say may, it says shall.
But it doesn't say, the select board must take a vote, has to have an action.
Right, well, maybe we don't have to vote, we just have to refer them.
You do have to vote, that's what, that's what Jesse told us and that's why I said we should have a policy. It's certainly not worth.
Well, I think that's the most important point, that, that like clarification, I think, makes this worth voting for.
Yeah, it certainly, I, I don't feel so passionately about this, I want to just spend a lot of time on it. I think it's important to make it clear to select, the select board that there's no choice in this action, which is what the law says, but also that an affirmative vote must be taken.
How many more should we adopt this policy?
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. And anything on the correspondence? I know we have, for anyone reading, there is a, I've seen an herbicide application from Amtrak and there's dates for when those applications will be done, if anyone's curious on that. It's rights of way will be May 19th through May, or through June 19th and then just brush application July 22nd through August 5th.
And would we put that on our website or something? And would we put that on our website or something? Some residents would be aware of it?
All right.
Is that posted anywhere else, Mike?
Um, right now, I believe it's just on the agenda, because we just received it before this meeting. I'll check this with Bianca, who works with the Conservation Commission, who it gets sent to, and then the select board gets CC'd on that. I'll see if they post it anywhere on their site. If, if, if they do, I'll link it elsewhere, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Yeah, because the only thing would be, I mean, people aren't supposed to really spend any time on the railroad tracks, but a lot of people cross them, you know, down there in the meadows. And so it would affect paths if people had a, a sick animal, they wouldn't wanna bring it around in those days.
There'll be, there'll be signs up as well, for when the application's happening.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn to watch basketball, I mean, it's better than like.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
All right.